Good evening and welcome to a meeting of the Chesapeake School Board. Our printed agenda is available in the back of the room if you wish to follow the business items we'll be discussing this evening. Roll call, Dr. Smith.
Mr. Sam Boone, Ms. Amanda Dean.
Here.
Mr. Mike Limonia.
Here.
Mr. John McCormick.
Here.
Mr. Norman Poole.
Here.
Mrs. Kim Scott.
Here.
Dr. Brittany Walker.
Here.
Mr. Tom Mercer, Vice Chair.
Here.
Mrs. Angie Swigert, Chair.
Here.
The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Does the superintendent or any board member wish to add or delete an item from the agenda?
Madam Chair, no items to add to the agenda, but we will need a closed session required for personnel matters, student matters, and real estate matters, as well as legal consultation.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove Item B from the action agenda for further review and discussion.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Dr. Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dean, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
We will now go into the closed portion of our meeting. I'll ask Vice Chair Mercer to read the language to take us into closed session.
Chair Swigert, I move that the board should convene in the closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Subsection A, 1, 2, 3, 8, and 19, for discussion and consideration of personnel matters regarding the performance of specific employees, student disciplinary matters, real estate matters concerning the acquisition of real property in Chesapeake, and consultation with legal counsel in reference to actual litigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Scott. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
We are now in closed session. Vice Chair Mercer, would you please read the statement to bring us back into open session?
Certainly. Chair Swigert, I move that the record shows that the only items discussed in the closed meeting were those specifically cited in the motion to convene into the closed meeting and those lawfully exempted from statutory meeting requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Limonia, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Dr. Cotton, do you have items resulting from closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I have two items related to students. The first motion, I recommend that student number one be expelled under the conditions discussed.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Dr. Walker, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Poole, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with a vote of eight to one, with Board Member Mercer voting in opposition.
Are there other items resulting from closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a second motion. I recommend student number two be expelled under the conditions discussed.
So moved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Limonia, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Ms. Smith, or Ms. Scott?
In reference to the employee's request to appeal the decision of the grievance hearing, I move to uphold the decision of the hearing administrator.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Poole, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
We will now move on to the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I'd like to call upon Pastor Randy Duncan from New Creation United Methodist Church to provide tonight's invocation. Afterward, I'll ask Margot Halli, a fifth grade student from Bets Road Intermediate School, to lead us in the pledge. Please stand as you are able.
come before you with hearts full of gratitude. Thank you for this day, for the gift of life, and for the opportunity to gather here in service to our community. We are grateful for the many blessings we enjoy, our families, our schools, and this vibrant community of Chesapeake. Thank you for the ones who are here tonight, those whom you have called, and the commitment of those who lead and serve in our public schools. Tonight especially, we lift up our school board members, grant them wisdom, discernment, and compassion as they deliberate and make decisions that shape the future of our schools, help them to act with integrity and fairness, keeping the well-being of students, educators, and families at the forefront of their minds. We pray for the teachers, staff, and administrators who dedicate their lives to educating and nurturing our children, strengthen them for the challenges they face, and inspire them with a sense of purpose and hope. We lift up our students, the precious future of this community, protect them, guide them, and kindle within them a love for learning and a vision for what they can achieve. God, we ask for your presence in this meeting. May your wisdom guide every decision, your peace preside over disagreements, and your love unite us in a common purpose. Help this board to lead with all courage and clarity, always seeking what is just and beneficial for all. Bless this time together and the work to be done. May it honor you and serve the people of our great city of Chesapeake. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much to both Margot and to Pastor Duncan for being here with us tonight, and for your family, Margot, for being with us here. Thank you. Next, under awards and recognitions, we have a special music presentation tonight. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Chair Swigert. We are very excited tonight. We have special guests with us, the Letterman from Great Bridge High School. They'll be under the direction of Dr. James Sanders, and they have a very special holiday music presentation prepared for you. Let's give them a warm welcome as they enter.
Rock, rock, rockin' round the Christmas tree. Yeah, we're rock, rock, rockin' round the Christmas tree. Yeah, we're rock, rock, rockin' round the Christmas tree. Yeah, we're rockin' round the Christmas tree. Rockin' around the Christmas tree at the Christmas party hop. Badoo wop wop. Mister toe hung where you can see every couple tries to stop. Rockin' around the Christmas tree, let the Christmas spirit ring. Badoo wop wop. Later we'll have some pumpkin pie and we'll do some caroling. Amma, amma now, you will bop, wah, ooh, shadah. Ooh, bop, wah, ooh, shadah. Voices singing, let's be jolly deck. The halls with mouths of holly. 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 Amma, amma, amma. Rockin' around the Christmas tree, have a happy holiday. Badoo wop wop. Everyone dancing merrily in the new old-fashioned way. Amma, amma now, you will bop, wah, ooh, shadah. Ooh, bop, wah, ooh, shadah. Voices singing, let's be jolly deck. The halls with mouths of holly. 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 Amma, amma, amma. Rockin' around the Christmas tree, have a happy holiday. Badoo wop wop. Everyone dancing merrily in the new old-fashioned way. Yeah, we're rock, rock, rockin' round the Christmas tree. Yeah, we're rock, rock, rockin' round the Christmas tree. Yeah, we're rockin' round the Christmas tree. Merry Christmas and happy holidays from the Great Bridge Letterman.
Thank you, and I'd like to invite each of you to proceed to your right to meet the members of the board. School and the direction of Dr. James Sanders for that performance tonight. Let's give him another round of applause.[654.29][654.29](applause) Next on our agenda this evening, we will honor the service of two board members whose terms are coming to an end. I've asked Dr. Cotton to assist with the presentation of these resolutions. Over to you, Dr. Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for making me have to follow that performance. I'll do my best. Appreciate recognizing two dedicated individuals who are spending their time with us tonight for their last board meeting. We're going to recognize the service of two of our esteemed board members, whose terms are coming to a close. But first, what I'll do is I'll start with Mr. Samuel Boone's resolution honoring the service of Mr. Samuel L. Boone, Jr. And the resolution reads as follows. Be it known to all persons that we, the members of the Chesapeake School Board, here assembled on this ninth day of December 2024, do hereby pay tribute to the outstanding and dedicated service rendered by Mr. Samuel L. Boone, Jr. as a member of this city's Board of Education. Whereas Mr. Samuel Boone was elected to the Chesapeake School Board in May 2012 and re-elected in 2016 and 2020, serving the community with dedication and distinction; and whereas he graduated from Manor High School in 1990 and went on to earn a Bachelor of Arts and Political Science degree from Norfolk State University, exemplifying a commitment to education and lifelong learning; and whereas Mr. Boone served with honor and distinction as a recruiter and master trooper for the Virginia State Police for 25 years, during which time he displayed extraordinary dedication, including acting as a first responder to the Pentagon attack on September 11, 2001, where he assisted the Red Cross, safeguarded the site, and bore witness to the tragic injuries and loss of life; and whereas Mr. Boone's service has extended beyond law enforcement to leadership and advocacy, including his appointment by Governor Youngkin in April of 2022 as Vice Chair of the Virginia Patrol Board, his active membership on the Special Advisory Education Advisory Committee, his role as a board member of Educational Services of Hampton Roads, and his involvement with the ECPI Criminal Justice Board and the Virginia State Police Association; and whereas he is a faithful member of First Baptist Church, South Hill, where he demonstrates his deep commitment to faith and community service; and whereas he faithfully attended school functions to show in person his support of their efforts. Now therefore be resolved that we honor and commend Mr. Samuel L. Boone, Jr. for his exceptional contributions to public service, education, and community leadership, and express our deepest gratitude for his unwavering commitment to improving the lives of those he serves. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of this date as a permanent record of the esteem accorded to board, by this board, to Mr. Samuel L. Boone, Jr. The resolution is attested by each member of the school board and the superintendent, as well as the clerk of the board. Madam Chair, it is my honor at this time to respectfully request the adoption of this resolution.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Ms. Scott, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Poole, is there any discussion at this time?
I would certainly like to just take a moment to say to Sam directly, you know, I have always been in awe and impressed by your very busy plate that you have, and yet you still find time to prioritize particularly all the things that are on your heart, but particularly a passion for advancing mental health, especially amongst our children. I know that has been something that has always been important to you, and it is something that we have always appreciated, and I think it's so valuable, and I hope, and I know that it is something you will continue long after your service on this board, and I have appreciated working with you, and I wish you the very best in all of your future endeavors, whatever they may look like, and we have appreciated having you here, and again, wish you all the best.
Ms. Scott?
I just wanted to echo Ms. Swigert's sentiments as well. Sam, it's been such an incredible privilege to work alongside you. You welcomed all of us warmly when we were elected to the board, and it's just been a joy to work alongside you. You showed tremendous compassion to our students here in Chesapeake, and I've loved working with you, and I wish you all the best. I can't wait to come see one of your comedy shows. Here, you're quiet, yet you're wise, and I just would love to see you in action on the stage at one of your comedy shows. So I do plan to do that one of these days.
Mr. Poole?
Sam, I've known you for two years now. Okay? And it's been exceptional, exciting. I just want to leave something with you. I used to watch you, I mean, some of the kids would come in when they were having problems, and you would look at them and say, can I mentor you? To me, that was the most phenomenal thing I've seen someone do, to want to take a child that's not their own and take a few minutes to say, how can I make your life better? And I want to just thank you for that.
Mr. Limonia?
Hey, Sam, so a lot's been said already, and I don't even want to try to repeat what everybody just said, which is, you know, amazing towards you, but, you know, we share a brotherhood in the law enforcement realm, right? We've had that commonality and that respect since day one. You know, you're a good man. It shows you're, you know, not only, you know, a servant, you know, by your service here on the board, but your service in your overall professional life as well, right? And you've been that way your whole life. So, you know, your work with the teen prevention, you know, suicide piece, we were just, you know, I asked you that question even before we walked in here to make sure you were going to continue on strong with that, and I know you are, and that's just amazing. I just appreciate all you do. I appreciate all you've done for this board, and, you know, just keep on doing more, because I know you're going to continue to do great. Thanks. Appreciate you.
With that, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Mr. Boone, the floor is yours if you would like to add a comment.
Thank you. I wanted to be quiet tonight, but I didn't have a prepared statement, but I'm just so overwhelmed, and I thank you for allowing me to serve with you for 12 years. First, I got to give recognition to God for allowing me to do this 12 years, and I got a chance to see my kids 12 years through school. That was just a blessing. You know, just, we have so many remarkable accomplishments. Dr. Cotton, you and your staff, you're all amazing. I really enjoy working with y'all. You have a great team and make you look good, so thank you, team, when you get a chance. Dr. Smith, thank you for always taking my calls and being there for me, and don't forget to tell my buddy Jenny, I really appreciate everything she's done for me over the years and everything, but it's just been a great, great opportunity to serve. I'm not going anywhere, so, I mean, if you truly committed to public service, you find something else to do. I have a full plate, and I continue to continue to do the mental health. I love my passion with at-risk kids and kids in special education also, those are my issues. So those are some of the things I keep doing, and I've already talked to a few administrators that, and telling them, keep calling me if they need me to come read to them or come volunteer. When I get some free time, I'm going to be there for them. Also, I don't want to forget about my beautiful wife, the brains of the operation. She's the one that keep me looking good, and she's the one who's quietly behind the scenes, educated with 20 years of service, always giving me these bright ideas and things I need to do and keep me on point, so I'm grateful to her and my kids and my family, my mother and my father also. And I don't want to forget about, he's quietly behind the scene too. He doesn't like recognition, Dr. Roberts. We talk often, Dr. Roberts and Mary Roberts, they're quietly behind the scenes, so thank you for being there with me from day one. Also, the Dr. Smith retired from Hampton Public School Superintendent. There's some of the people who are behind the scenes who often keep me on the right track and let me know if I'm doing something wrong, because they watch the meetings and everything, so I'm so grateful for all of them. This last election, it was a tough battle. You know, people often told me I was going to lose, and guess what? They were exactly right.[1170.01][1170.01](laughing) I lost, but you got to go down with the ship sometime. I had a few faithful people who have been there with me from day one. I'm so grateful for the 18,000 votes that say, hey, we went through the power, we found you, Sam, we believe in you, but I'm so grateful for all those people who have supported me all year. I can't forget you. I appreciate everything, but I was fighting up here a battle, you know, had a small team that stayed with me from beginning to end. I'm so grateful for all those people. Ms. Cuff, I can't forget her, a shout-out from Georgetown Primary. She was a special education teacher, been with me from day one. I'm going to be grateful for everybody who has supported me over the years. I can't thank you enough, and I don't like to say goodbye, but I'll be around. My plate is full, I have a lot going on, and, you know, like I say, I will always be serving, as long as I have breath, I'll be serving. I was here for the kids, the youth. I don't know if I was much of a board member, I was so great, but I love assisting the students, wanting them to continue to get a quality education. I've spoken to the new board members, I will be praying for all of y'all, that y'all do the very best. I want you all to be successful going forward, and just teamwork, work together, don't think about I, put the students and the teachers first, and I know y'all will do well.
Thank you again, Sam. It has truly been a pleasure working with you. The next item is the resolution honoring the service of Board Member Mr. Tom Mercer. Back to you, Dr. Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, it is my honor to present for the board's considerations, excuse me, apparently I can't speak this evening, a resolution honoring the service of Mr. Thomas L. Mercer, Sr. The resolution reads as follows. Be it known to all persons that we, the members of the Chesapeake School Board, here assembled on the ninth day of December 2024, do hereby pay tribute to the outstanding and dedicated service rendered by Mr. Thomas L. Mercer, Sr. as a member of this city's Board of Education. Whereas Mr. Mercer graduated from Indian River High School in 1973 and went on to earn a Bachelor's of Arts degree from Atlantic Christian College and Duke University, where he obtained a Master of Divinity degree; and whereas Mr. Mercer has faithfully served on the school board since his election in May 1996, being re-elected in 2000, 2004, 2008, 2012, 2016, and 2020, thereby dedicating more than a quarter of a century to the advancement of education in Chesapeake; and whereas Mr. Mercer demonstrated exceptional leadership as Vice Chairman of the School Board from 2002 to 2004, January to June of 2014, and January 2022 to December 2024, as well as serving as Chairman from July 2004 to July 2008; and whereas Mr. Mercer is a lifelong resident of Chesapeake, Virginia, and currently serves as a pastor of St. Paul's United Methodist Church, with prior pastries at Mount Pleasant United Methodist Church and Hickory United Methodist Church, all located in Chesapeake; and whereas Mr. Mercer has contributed significantly to civic and community life through his roles as a member of the Hickory Ruption Club, past Vice Chairman and Board Member of the Chesapeake Carefree Clinic, member of the Board of Advisors of the Great Bridge Battlefield and Waterways History Foundation, and member of the Great Bridge Clergy Association; and whereas he faithfully attended school functions to show in person his support of their efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board and the Chesapeake community extend their deepest gratitude to Mr. Thomas L. Mercer, Sr. for his extraordinary service, steadfast dedication, and lasting contributions to the education and well-being of students, families, and the broader community. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made part of the minutes of this date as a permanent record of the esteem accorded by this board to Mr. Thomas L. Mercer, Sr. The resolution is attested by each member of the school board, the superintendent, and the clerk of the board. Madam Chair, at this time, it is my honor to respectfully request adoption of this resolution.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Mr. Limonia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCormick, is there any discussion?
Ms. Scott? Sorry, I'm not quick enough with my button over here. Tom, I love you so much, and it's been such a privilege to work alongside you, and Sam as well. You bring a wealth of institutional knowledge and wisdom to the table. I described Sam as quiet and wise. You have a lot to say, and are wise.[1459.01][1459.01](laughing) But I have thoroughly enjoyed just sitting and listening and learning from you, because I have a lot to learn, and I'm going to miss that about you. And Tom, who am I going to roast on their birthday when you leave?[1472.11][1472.11](laughing) That's also been the highlight of my job with you and working alongside you, but I wish you all the best. Thank you, Tom.
Dr. Walker?
Yes, I just wanted to say, Mr. Mercer, I've known you longer than anyone else up here. You were one of the first people I met when I moved to Chesapeake and started working as a teacher in Chesapeake Public Schools. I think I met you before the first day of school even started, because I was at Hickory in the summer working in my classroom and ran into you at some point, but anyways, you were always supportive of me then, you've been very supportive of me now as a colleague, and thank you for that. Even through disagreements, I've always felt you've just been so respectful towards me, and that's one thing I love about you. I know that this is not goodbye, because you will not miss a chance to roast me during March Madness, when, if Kentucky, you know, loses or does anything, you know, off, that's not maybe accurate for our program, but, and I will not miss the opportunity to do the same for you either. So with that being said, thank you for all of your service at Chesapeake Public Schools. Thank you for always being a great friend and a great colleague, and go Cats.
Mr. Limonia?
Hey, Tom, you've been such a wealth of knowledge. I look at you, you know, coming from the Italian kid on this board, right as the godfather, you know, for us the last couple of years. You know, you've had a great amount of just leadership and mentorship, you know, the background, everything else that you provided, you know, to put the, you know, I don't want to say the spin, but, you know, just the context is the better terminology of some of the issues we've had to take on that have been tough, right, during this, during the timeframe. So, you know, I appreciate everything, everything you've done. 29 years, I think there's some people on this board that were just in elementary school when you started, right? And if nothing else, I will, I will miss, you know, there will be something missing, I think, in my heart, not hearing you, you know, chew some ice during these, during these meetings. So I love it, you know, honestly, and I seriously mean that. I'm like, what am I going to do? And I don't hear Tom chewing ice anymore, right? So this quietness isn't going to, isn't going to work for me, but, you know, thank you for all you've done. Thank you for all you've done for the city. Obviously, you know, 29 years is a long time. That commitment is amazing, and, you know, I'm sure the community has got to be, you know, just thankful and uber impressed by your commitment to them, so, and the school system, the teachers, the students, everybody, so thank you.
Tom, gosh, there's so many things I could say. I don't want to necessarily repeat everything that's been said, but I wholeheartedly agree with all of it. I can say, when I first agreed to step into the role of Chair at just having been on the board for two and a half years, the only way that seemed remotely possible is by knowing that I would have you sitting right next to me, and your fountain of knowledge and wisdom and ability to see both sides of things whenever there were two sides to see on something, and that is something that, just because you may be going on a different path, don't think for one second that we're not going to continue to pick up the phone and call on Reverend Tom Mercer when we need to pick your brain and juggle, you know, your historical memory in there of all the things that are stewing, because you are a fountain of knowledge here, and that is something that is, has been tremendously important to us here, and it can't be understated or overstated how impressive your life of service is, and how much of it you have dedicated to this district and all of the children and the people in it, and we appreciate you, and you will truly be missed, and you are appreciated, and we wish you the very, very best, Tom.
With that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes. Mr. Mercer, the floor is now yours.
Thank you. But, Sam, I lost too, so we have a sharing of fraternity tonight. I first want to recognize that I have my lovely wife, Susan, here, who has taught special needs children for 31 years, and she is a trooper, and, yeah, you can clap for her, she's great.[1737.91][1737.91](applause) I think even more importantly, she's been married to me for over 43 years, and so you think you've suffered with me on this board? She's suffered longer than that. And then I have my youngest grandson, Davy, who came up here and got a candy cane, and he's eating it right now. He goes to another school system that will remain nameless, but they're doing pretty good for him. And then his dad, my son-in-law, David, and then my daughter, Krista, and then my oldest grandson, Trip, is here tonight, and then my daughter-in-love, Rebecca, is here. My son is in charge of the training academy for the Sheriff's Department, and they chose to have their graduation tonight. What a way to get out of coming here.[1796.11][1796.11](laughing) But no, he's not happy about that, but anyway. But no, he's not happy about that. But anyway. It has truly been my honor and privilege to serve on the Chesapeake School Board for the past twenty-eight and a half years. Um, I'm filled with gratitude for the opportunity to contribute to the success of our schools and the future of our children. And throughout that journey of twenty-eight and a half years, I've seen firsthand the dedication of our teachers, the resilience of our students, especially coming out of the time of the pandemic, and the unwavering support of many of our parents and our staff. I've had the honor that I doubt most of you are gonna have of serving under three superintendents. And they have each been different, but they have each brought the particular talents, I think, for that particular moment to the job. And, uh, Dr. Cotton, thank you for reading the resolution. I appreciate you so much. And I appreciate your staff. As Mr. Boone says, they make you look good. They really do. Uh, they, they help us as well, and, uh, they just are tremendous folks. The titles, the plaques, the accolades are kind, and they're appreciated. But I have to say that what I valued the most during my tenure on this school board was the ability to be the s- of service to everyone in our city, uh, to hear the stories of individuals and families, to visit our local schools, to attend graduations and graduations and graduations, and give awards to incredible student and teacher recipients. Though it was harder, I equally valued the more difficult work of effective disciplinary action, ensuring school safety, and having to disappoint for the sake of decisions that would benefit the greatest number of children. And that's tough for all of you. We've all faced that, and you have in just your short years on this board. And so as I close this chapter, I want to encourage those of you who remain on this board, as well as those who will join in the future, to remember what truly matters, and that's our students. Our responsibility is to make decisions that serve the best interest of our children, teachers, parents, and staff. And in the world in which we live in, I have to say, not for the sake of politics, but for the sake of our community's future. To secure a bright future for our city, all citizens must continue to work together across all of those lines that sometimes divide us, all of our differing views, with one united purpose, ensuring that every student in Chesapeake has the opportunity to thrive. This work is never easy, but it's always, always worth it. Be in conversation with your colleagues. Please do that, all of them, no matter who they are, no matter what you think of them. You'll be surprised at the goals you hold in common and the work you can accomplish together when you do that. Once again, thank you for allowing me to serve, and may the future of Chesapeake Public Schools be bright, strong, and full of promise for generations to come. Now, most of the time when somebody wins the Super Bowl or they win an award, they are asked, what are you going to do? I'm just gonna tell you, I just lost an election, and day after tomorrow, I'm heading to Disney World. Thank you.
Thank you again, Tom. It really, truly has been a pleasure working with you and Sam both, and we appreciate your service more than you know. We will now move on to the public hearing for the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan. Dr. Smith, are there any citizens who signed up to speak under the public hearing section this evening?
Not under the public hearing tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. We will now move on to the regular hearing of citizens. Dr. Smith? Apologies. During their allotted time, speakers should observe our rules of decorum and know that expression of concerns and criticism on matters of school policy and operations is welcome. While the speaker's own comments are welcome, they may not play pre-recorded messages. Dr. Smith, are there any citizens who have requested time to speak this evening?
Yes, we have three citizens requesting to speak.
I want to thank those citizens who have requested time to speak this evening. As a reminder, there are two ways that you can request time to speak at our meetings. You can call the clerk's office by twelve noon the day of the meeting, or sign up to speak prior to the start of the meeting in person. All in-person requests to speak must be submitted to the deputy clerk five minutes prior to the published meeting's start time. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Once your allotted time is over, we ask that you promptly exit the podium, and you may choose to sit in the boardroom if seats are available. But standing or sitting on the floor will not be permitted, and you may not block the exit doors. We would also like to ask that you refrain from any behavior that disrupts the meeting, including the use of profanity, applause, cheering, or jeering. Dr. Smith, please call the first speaker.
Speaker number one, I'd like to invite you to the podium. Speakers are called in numerical order and asked to state their name and city of residence before they begin.
Thank you. Vic Nichols, Chesapeake. The FDA attempted to hide all the records required to be released regarding the Comirnaty or COVID shot. By July, 2021, there was strong epidemiological evidence that it didn't stop transmission. On August sixth, 2021, CDC Director Walensky admitted to CNN's Wolf Blitzer that the shot no longer stops transmission. That was greater than two weeks before mandates were issued. The FDA learned plenty about side effects during the initial eight months of the rollout. Not only was extensive DNA plasma contamination ignored by the FDA, but they also left out anything about SV40 DNA in the plasmids. And what that is, is those are sequences that are specifically used to experimentally transport DNA into cell nuclei, and that can cause mutations. School Board Member Mercer indicated that the students are the priority. I submit that in the decisions made by the school board, it wasn't the kids that were the priority. I would like to challenge the board to get back to that. It's not popular. It doesn't bring a, a whole lot of cheers and stuff. But if your focus is on the kids, that's where it needs to stay. Let's see if that's challenged, is accepted. Thank you.
Speaker number two, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Knight, and I'm a resident of rural southern Chesapeake. A proud graduate of Great Bridge High School, and my only son, Mackay, attended Hickory and Grassfield Schools. Mackay will graduate Virginia Tech this May with, with a Bachelor's Degree in Forestry. I'm truly grateful for the education he received in Chesapeake Public Schools. Both my son and I received world-class educations in Chesapeake Public Schools, graduating in nineteen eighty-eight and twenty-twenty. But sadly, today, in rural Chesapeake, we are now experiencing all the negative impacts of overdevelopment, affecting every facet of our quality of life, including education. When we live in a climate where it is morally and ethically acceptable for developers to decide they want to build one thousand two hundred and ninety-two condos on a parcel of land zoned for a school that is already at a hundred and eighty-one percent capacity, something has to change. As educators, we know a primary indicator for student success is class size and student-to-teacher ratio. We can't allow developers to do this to our children and grandchildren. It is our job as community members, public educators, and locally elected officials to advocate in the best interests of all our children, which is this ca- which in this case means taking on the developers, but how? As community members, we sit on committees to help shape the city's aspirational comprehensive plan, and then we attend public hearing, hearings, one application at a time. As board members, what can you all do to advocate for our students? Thank you, Chair Swigert, for speaking at City Council on behalf of our students in Deep Creek. Would any of you be willing to come forward and speak on behalf of the students at Grassfield Elementary against the one thousand nine hundred and, one thousand two hundred and ninety-two condos Dragus wants to build? The City Council meeting is next Tuesday, December seventeenth, at six thirty PM. Joy to the world, exactly what we all want to be doing in the holiday season. The ground isn't even broken on Culpeper Elementary, and we hear it's unofficially already at capacity. Can the school board levy impact fees on developers? Make them, and not the tax-paying citizens, facilitate their own profits? Are you all able to collaborate with the Planning Commission to influence zoning ordinances around schools to reduce density of housing in overcrowded areas? I don't know what's within your purview, and that's why I'm asking. What can central administration do to mitigate overcrowding? We need help. Our students need help, and we elected you all to advocate in the best interest of all our students. Developing young minds should always take precedence over developing condominiums, and most certainly developer profits. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board, and Merry Christmas.
Speaker number three, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good evening. Linda Tindell, Chesapeake. Last month, I spoke as a Chesapeake school employee and explained my problem with over a year of banked sick leave. I have followed up with an email of a fabulous idea to allow employees to use their banked leave to invest in bonds for the construction of Culpeper Elementary. It would be a win-win for the school system. Hopefully, you will come up with a solution that will keep the wheels on my bus going round and round. Tonight, I'm here as a concerned citizen. I am asking for your help in curbing the high-density housing push that is overwhelming the Grassfield area schools. Already approved is eight hundred and eighty-five units in Scenic Heights, three hundred units in Cahoon Commons, sixty additional units through a proper modification of Cardinal Meadows. Grassfield Reserve is still building. Shalali Commons is pending approval. All of these housing units are excluded from Level of Service reports because the students are not yet enrolled. So the next project gets approved, and then the next. This needs to stop. Cedar Road Elementary now has seven portables. Deep Creek Central Elementary has more students in portables than in the building. Grassfield Elementary is approaching two hundred percent capacity. There are other communities in Chesapeake in need of revitalization, and the schools are ready for more students. The developers do not find this to be the most profitable option. If they want to build in Chesapeake, that should be their only option. No more housing developments, developments should be approved where the schools are at or beyond capacity. We do not have the time or the money to catch up the infrastructure. Thank you to Paige Stutz and Chairman Swigert for speaking at City Council on November nineteenth, successfully requesting denial for a facility that was inappropriate in a school zone in Deep Creek. On Tuesday, December seventeenth, there are two items on the agenda to be heard at City Council that need school board attention. First, the Commons. A proper modification to increase density. Imagine that. My primary issue with the project is the entrance facing the Cedar Road Elementary bus ramp exit on Elementary Road, the teacher parking lot, tech center students, cafeteria deliveries, dumpster trucks, emergency responders, and the crosswalk for the children in the three hundred-plus unit project to get to school. The location of their entrance is just wrong, and clearly a safety issue for the children. Second, Springton, a twelve hundred and ninety-two-unit high-density PUD zoned for Grassfield Elementary, Huga Owens Middle, and Grassfield High. None of these schools has room for the number of students this will bring. Citizen comments and requests for denial are ignored. We can't do it alone. Please join us in requesting relief from this push for high-density housing. We need the elected school board members and staff to stand with citizens to stop the overdevelopment in Grassfield. Enough is enough. Thank you. I hope to see you on the seventeenth. Please attend. Good night.
This concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Our practice is to receive information. However, we do not usually engage in dialogue, and that is our intent tonight. If appropriate and not already provided, someone from the superintendent's staff will evaluate your concern and provide a response. We will now consider the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mercer. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Scott. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
We are now moving to the information agenda. The first item is the monthly financial report. Ms. Glod.
Thank you, Chair Swigert. In this evening's board meeting documents, we have included the interim financial reports for October, 2024. I'm pleased to report that both revenues and expenditures are within the expected ranges for the month. Total realized revenue for October was fifty-one point four million dollars, which consists of twenty-seven point seven million dollars from the state, twenty-three and a half million dollars from the city, and the remainder from other local revenues and the federal government. Our final fall student membership reached thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine, an increase of three hundred and forty-seven students compared to the projected average daily membership used to estimate the state operating revenues for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Based on this fall student membership, we estimate an increase of two point six million dollars in state revenue above the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five appropriation. State operating revenue for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five will be adjusted according to the final ADM as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, alongside the state's technical budget updates in the spring. With the board's support, we will seek action to request an appropriation of this additional revenue during the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget process. In October, we submitted requests for S R three reimbursements for expenditures incurred through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The remaining balance of three point one million dollars is fully encumbered to complete the partial HVAC replacements at Norfolk Highlands Primary School and Rena B. Wright Primary School. The district was granted a late liquidation extension, but extends the reimbursement deadline for this balance from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four to January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. For the HVAC ARPA grant, there is an unreimbursed balance of one point nine million dollars. Reimbursements have also been submitted for expenditures incurred through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and this balance is fully encumbered for the HVAC replacements at Sparrow Road Intermediate School and Georgetown Primary School. The reimbursement deadline for this grant is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I see no questions at this time, so we will move on to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Audit of Financial Report. Back to you.
Thank you. This evening, I'm pleased to introduce Laura Harden, CPA and Audit Director at Cherry Becker Advisory, who will present the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four Audit of the Financial Statements. Before she begins, I would like to express my gratitude to Tammy Rodriguez, Akira Brown, and their staff for their leadership and excellent work in carrying out accounting best practices and standards. I also want to thank multiple departments across the division, including School Nutrition Services and Title One, who helped prepare the documentation required for the audit. I will now turn the floor over to Ms. Harden.
Well, thank you all for having me here this evening to present the results of the June thirty, twenty twenty-four Audit of Chesapeake Public Schools. Uh, so my name is Laura Harden. I am an engagement director with, um, Cherry, Cherry Becker, the public accounting firm that was hired to audit the schools. Um, I am responsible for the entire audit, signed our audit opinion. We also do have a second partner, independent reviewer. His name is Rob Churchman. He provides us an independent perspective at the end of our procedures before we issue our audit opinion. So first up, I'll go over the results of the audit, probably what you're all here for. Um, so we did issue our report on December fourth, twenty twenty-four. We issued what's called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That is the best opinion you can receive as a result of an audit. It's what some people call a clean opinion. We do perform audits under both government auditing standards and the Auditor of Public Accounts specifications for audits of county cities and towns. We did not identify any matters of non-compliance that are required to be reported under either of those standards or the specifications. We also did not identify anything that we consider to be a material weakness in internal control over financial reporting. If we identified any control deficiencies as a part of our audit procedures, I would tell you about those tonight. In our audit process, we can discover misstatements. I am pleased to report that we didn't identify any misstatements that had to be corrected or were left uncorrected by management. Some qualitative aspects, um, so the significant accounting policies used by the schools are described in note one of the financial statements. Management is responsible, responsible for selecting and using those appropriate accounting policies. There were no new accounting policies that were adopted during the year, and the application of exists, existing policies was not changed. We did not note anything that we considered to be an inappropriate accounting policy or practice. As part of our audit, we also gained an understanding of the related party transactions of the school. Um, and we didn't note anything that resulted in non-compliance. We did not have any difficulties in identifying those transactions. We did not note any that had a lack of business purpose. In our audit, we can also identify things that are considered to be significant and unusual transactions. Um, we, um, we didn't identify anything that we consider to be. We didn't identify anything that we consider to be either significant or unusual. That would be things that are outside of the course of normal business. We also noted that all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in their proper period. The financial statements also have items that are considered to be significant estimates. What this means is these balances can fluctuate year over year based on the underlying assumptions that go into making those estimates. The most sensitive to the financial statements are management's estimates relating to pension and other post-employment benefits, their assets, liabilities, and the deferred flows of resources. Additionally, capital asset depreciable lives are based on the expected lives of the assets, so they can fluctuate based on that determination. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. We don't have any that we consider to be particularly sensitive to the users of the financial statements. We do provide a couple of nonattest services, so these are things that are outside of the normal scope of the audit. Our advisory practice performs consulting for Gatsby Statement Number ninety-six and eighty-seven. These are the subscription-based information technology arrangements and lease agreements. And then our advisory team did also perform or prepare the financial statement for the schools, and then we assist in the assembly and printing of the financial statements. For each of those services, management does assign someone to oversee the services, review them, and make all management decisions. We're not aware of any other circumstances that would create a threat to our auditor independence. We have evaluated all the services, and we are considered to be independent of the schools and have met our ethical responsibilities. Next up, some just required communication. So I'm pleased to tell you we didn't have any difficulties in performing and completing our audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management. We did not have to consult with anybody outside of our engagement team for any kind of a contentious matter. At the date of our audit opinion, management did sign a representation letter. That letter represents to us that they have provided us all the information that we need to perform our audit. We are not aware of any consultations that management had with other accountants. That would be any sort of opinion shopping. We also did not identify any other findings or issues that are required to be reported to you. We did not identify any fraud, legal acts, or violations of laws or regulations during our audit, and we have no going concern matters to report. The next few slides, this just goes over that in the financial statements, there is a section called Required Supplementary Information. This is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It's an unaudited section, but we do review it to ensure that it is materially consistent with the basic financial statements. And then just next up, there are some new Gatsby standards that will be applicable over the next few years. So Gatsby Statement Number one oh one for compensated absences will be applicable for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. We have met with the schools, and they are evaluating whether or not there will be an impact as a result of that standard. And with that, I'd like to thank Ms. Glad and her staff for making another successful audit, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't see any questions at this time, so thank you so much for the service.
Okay.
Thank you to your team. We will now move on to the proposed plan for the establishment of new attendance zones for Crestwood and B.M. Williams Elementary Schools. Ms. Stutz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The capital improvement plan calls for the conversion of primary and intermediate schools to elementary schools that serve students in grades K through five where feasible. In order to accomplish this typically, a capital improvement is required along with an attendance zone adjustment. The construction of the new elementary school to replace Crestwood Intermediate gives us an opportunity to do that. Since we have the capital improvement underway, an attendance zone adjustment is required to convert both of those schools to K five. With that being the intro, we're going to have Alex Pope from our planning office conduct the presentation this evening. Alex?
Good evening, everyone. I'll stop down for a second before I begin. Thank you, Tom and Sam. You know, twelve and twenty-four years is hard for me to complicate a contemplative amount of service, so we really appreciate it, and felt to be remiss if I didn't say something. But I am here to present for you a proposed plan for two new attendance zones, and that'll be for the new Crestwood Elementary School, which is currently being constructed, and the B.M. Williams Primary School, which will convert to a K five elementary school in conjunction with the opening of that school. All right, so as I said, we're establishing new attendance zones with the conversion to K five for those two schools. Under the current model, the schools are primary and intermediate. They share a zone one hundred percent with all the students involved. The students start off with B.M. Williams Primary School with grades K through two, and then they move up to Crestwood Intermediate School for grades three through five. And as Crestwood Elementary School and B.M. Williams Elementary School will now each serve K through five, obviously, we have to divide that zone between the two schools. And once that happens, students will no longer attend both schools. They will attend one or the other, either B.M. Williams Elementary School or Crestwood Elementary School for their whole K through five experience. So the reason behind this is we've had it for a few years now that we have in our capital improvement plan that we are going to convert our primary and intermediate schools to K five elementary schools. We say we're feasible because there are a few schools in the district where it doesn't make sense to do that. It's not as feasible, but the majority of our schools in the long term would be converted to K five elementary schools. And anytime we do that, we need to establish new attendance zones because they're no longer split between primary and intermediate. They're just K five. And in this case, Crestwood Intermediate School was identified as an aging facility. When we had our facility and consultant study done, they actually recommended that this school just needs to be replaced. And so with that in mind, we identified this as an ideal situation to be our starting point for that conversion from primary intermediate to move to K five. All right, so I just want to give you a rundown. This is our typical attendance zone criteria for whenever we're changing attendance zones. We look at all of these things. In particular, first and foremost, we always want to make sure we're doing our best to limit overcrowding. That's the first thing we have in mind when we're doing an attendance zone adjustment. In particular, with this attendance zone, that last board accommodate required educational programs, especially with B.M. Williams Primary converting to a K five school. There's different considerations for K through two, between K through five, and something easy to point out is student-teacher ratios. At the lower grades, K through one, there's a much lower student-to-teacher ratio than there is for fourth or fifth grade. So lower grades, there's less students per teacher. Higher grades, there's more students per teacher. So you can see how the educational space is required for those different grade levels would be vastly different depending on which grade level we're talking about. All right, so we're showing here, this is our current primary and intermediate school zone. It's the light blue area surrounded in the pink outline, and you can see B.M. Williams Primary School there on Battlefield Boulevard North and Crestwood Intermediate School by Great Bridge Boulevard. And these schools, again, they share one hundred percent of the students. Every student in this zone attends B.M. Williams for K through two, and then they move to Crestwood for three through five. And with the conversion, that's why we're going to have to divide that zone between the two. Our current enrollment, both schools currently have a capacity set at seven hundred and twenty-five students. B.M. Williams Primary School has seven hundred and thirty-six students as of the October enrollment count. That puts them at one hundred two percent of capacity. Crestwood Intermediate School has seven hundred and thirty-four students. That puts them at one hundred one percent of capacity. Both schools are currently utilizing portables. B.M. Williams has fourteen portables, four of which are for the Chesapeake Preschool Initiative, and Crestwood Intermediate has six portables. So here are home sites that have been approved through the city's preliminary subdivision or site plan process. They've been approved, but they have not yet been built, so they're showing the potential for developments. And they're in one box because since they're a shared zone right now, those thirty-seven approved home sites serve both of those schools. Once we divide the zone, that thirty-seven won't be equal between the two. Depending on where we draw the line, that thirty-seven will be divided between the two. And, oh, sorry. It's also important to note that those thirty-seven are not the only potential home sites in the area. There is a fair bit of other land available for developments. They just haven't been approved through the rezoning and site plan processes yet. So we're going to present three options tonight. Option one, we're going to divide the zone along the Chesapeake Expressway in a north-south line. I'll highlight that here. And students on the east side of this line, in the blue area, will attend B.M. Williams Elementary School, whereas students on the west side, in the yellow area, they will attend the Crestwood Elementary School. All right, so this chart here, the white area, is the current enrollment that I've already showed you, and the yellow part is what would happen if we took those same students living in those same houses and we drew that dividing line today. Where would they go to school? In this scenario here, our enrollment at B.M. Williams Elementary School would go down to six hundred and eighty-four students and ninety-four percent. Crestwood Elementary School would actually go up in enrollment to seven hundred and eighty-six students. However, the new school that we're building is much bigger than the current intermediate school, so the anticipated opening capacity for that school is going to be nine hundred and forty students. So even though the enrollment's going up, the percent of capacity is going down to eighty-four percent. We're going to do pros and cons for all three of these options. Pros for this option, that geographic border is nice, clear, simple. There's no confusion on it, and we love when we can draw our lines that way. We'll also be able to reduce portables at B.M. Williams Elementary School by about half of what is currently there. So it doesn't seem like a pro at first, but most potential for new residential development would be in the Crestwood Elementary School zone. The reason that is a pro is that under this option, we would be offering relatively solid amount of potential enrollment growth space at the new elementary school. And on top of that, this is our most balanced option of our three options in terms of enrollment. You'll see, as we get to the other two options, in one option, B.M. Williams Primary will have a little bit more enrollment, and in the other, Crestwood will have a little bit more enrollment. Cons, this option does have one little traffic complication on the south side of the Crestwood Zone. It has to do with entering Kempsville Road, and I'm actually going to show you on the map exactly what I'm talking about. So there's that little red circle there. The east-west line is Kempsville Road, and you can see there's a neighborhood to the south. There are two entry and exit points from that neighborhood. And the intersection there to the west is where Kempsville intersects with Battlefield Boulevard. And the one that is closer to that intersection is a little bit too close for the left-hand turn. There's a lot of traffic in that area, so it's a difficult left-hand turn to make. And the one that's further away actually has a median that prevents the buses from making a left-hand turn out in general. So if they use that exit, they have to go to a different neighborhood and turn arounds. And it's something that we can deal with. It's not a new problem. They already do it at the middle school level. It's just something that, you know, transportation would like to us to point to as a potential negative for this option. Option two, we're still dividing along the Chesapeake Expressway, but in this option, the border would follow Battlefield Boulevard north to the south until it meets the intracoastal waterway. And same as option one, the east side in blue, they would attend B.M. Williams Elementary School. The west side in yellow, they would attend Crestwood Elementary School. And there's the highlight of the line that we're talking about. And in this, we have seven hundred and eight students going to B.M. Williams Elementary School for a ninety-eight percent of enrollment capacity, and Crestwood Elementary School has seven hundred and sixty-two students, down to eighty-one percent of capacity. So our pros here, we have the most space available at Crestwood Elementary School, and that's good because we have the most potential for development in this zone, same as option one. But in this option, we're providing the most space at Crestwood Elementary for that potential enrollment growth. And with this line, we're mitigating that traffic concern from the first option. Cons, this has the highest enrollment of all the three options at B.M. Williams Elementary School, and in hand with that means that's limiting the reduction of portables that we can do at B.M. Williams relative to our other options. So our third and final option that we're presenting tonight is divide along the expressway, but in this option, the border would follow the center line of Kempsville Road northeast until it meets the Southern Railroad, highlighted here. And students on the east side still attend B.M. Williams Elementary School, but the big difference on this one being that while the western side students still attend Crestwood Elementary School, that whole southern portion of the zone now will also attend Crestwood Elementary School, the students south of Kempsville Road. And in this option, B.M. Williams would be down to six hundred and fifty-eight students for a ninety-one percent capacity. And, oh, sorry. And Crestwood Elementary would be up to eight hundred and twelve students for eighty-six percent of capacity. So pros here, this is of our three options would be the one that we'd be able to remove the greatest number of portables at B.M. Williams Elementary School. We put this exception in here because no matter how many portables we get to remove from that school, we have to have those four portables there for the Chesapeake Preschool Initiative, so they have to stay. Cons, we have the largest number of students at Crestwood Elementary School, leaving less room for growth. And just like the first two options, that zone is the one that has the most potential for residential enrollment, so it's kind of two things butting heads with each other. We have the option where we have the most potential development in Crestwood Elementary, and at the same time, we're leaving the least amount of space for future growth at that same school. And we would have a bit longer distance for bus routes for those students that are south of Kempsville Road. All right, so our summary, start off visually. Again, option one's that nice clean line right down the middle of this zone. Option two, we have the carve-out between the Chesapeake Expressway and Battlefield Boulevard north to put more students at B.M. Williams. Helps the traffic issue, but hurts the higher enrollment at B.M. Williams. And option three, we put that whole southern portion over to Crestwood Elementary School, which, again, negative that we have a little bit less growth, or room for growth there, excuse me. And again, looking at these numbers, that center line, option one, that's our median, whereas option two, higher enrollment at B.M. Williams. And option three, lowest enrollment at B.M. Williams, but less room for growth at Crestwood Elementary School. All right, so keeping all of that in mind, staff's recommendation is that we go with attendance zone, option one. Again, clear, simple geographic border. It's less confusing for families. You know, if you're on the west side of it, you're going to Crestwood Elementary School. If you're on the east side, you're going to B.M. Williams Elementary School. We also get to reduce about half of our portables at B.M. Williams, while at the same time still leaving some room for growth at Crestwood Elementary School. Sorry, I keep hitting the wrong button. All right, so upcoming, we have two meetings planned as of now. First would be January thirteenth after the New Year. That'd be our first public hearing and work session. After that, February tenth would be our second public hearing, work session, and then we'd be requesting final action from the board for our chosen attendance zone. Outreach, both, not only the families affected, but also the faculty and staff at the buildings will be affected by this as well. We'll be posting on the web pages for the school district, as well as both the primary and intermediate school. We're going to email families with this timeline of meeting dates, as well as any relevant updates as we move forward. A survey, this survey is only going to go out to those families within this attendance zone that are going to be affected by the redrawing of the attendance zone lines. And that survey is going to have, they get to choose which option that they prefer. There's also going to be a comment section where they can provide additional comments as to why that is what they prefer. And then after, use the school board, take final action on this. We would provide notification to all the affected families on what school assignment they would have. As far as faculty and staff survey, we have actually already sent that out, so that process is already ongoing. Based on our current timeline, we're still anticipating construction can be completed in the summer, so we can open the new elementary school for the coming twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year. In this scenario, all K through four students would be attending BM, attending BM Williams Primary and Crestwood Intermediate School. And all incoming kindergarten students would be affected by the rezoning. If it was delayed, which at this point would be some unforeseen delay that we can anticipate, we would open for the originally anticipated twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And at that point, all K-three students would be affected, as well as the next two years of incoming kindergarten students. But the current fourth and fifth grade students would not be affected. They'd attend the same middle school they're already attending. And upon rezoning, all affected students will attend the school for which they are rezoned. Thank you. We have any questions?
Dr. Walker?
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for this, super clear, easy to understand, very organized. Thank you so much for all this information. Just to clarify, with option one, which is the recommendation, that leaves BM Williams with about seven portables-ish. Is that correct?
Well, about half, so again, the four Chesapeake preschool initiative portables are going to stay there no matter what. So when we say about half, we're referring to the remaining ten that are there for the primary school itself.
Oh, gotcha. So there'd still be an additional five or so on top of that.
About, we won't know until we're closer to opening.
And I do know that they use portables at BM Williams for speech, special ed, maybe like resource type situations. Would this be like five full classes outside, based on capacity? Do we have an estimation of that? I'm just super bummed that they're still going to have portables, that's all.
No, it's, it's, we can't really determine that yet until we decide who's going to go where. You know, special ed, as you know, plays, plays a part in that. And until we see who's going to what school, it's hard for us to make that determination. Plus, you're going to have another year of, of enrollment changes and, and differences in, in the kids. And we lose the fifth grade, of course, and then we'll have the new kindergartens in. So, you know, we, if we can take away more than half, we will. But it, it really just depends on the, the numbers. And I don't want to tell you I can take away ten, and really then I end up only taking away, away five. And as you well know, and you just alluded to it, BM Williams doesn't have some of the specialty spaces because it's an older building, support spaces for resource, psychologists, more guidance counselors, small groups. It doesn't have those spaces where the, where the new building does.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Yeah, I, I know it's all an estimate. I think my struggle is that community has seen a building addition that they got for kindergarten, which I know was only to accommodate kindergarten, but it, you know, it looks like, oh, we got a building addition, we still have fourteen portables. And now if they're going through rezoning where Crestwood won't have any, and then they're still left with portables, I just, I hate that for them. I do understand a lot of the pros to this, though, but I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you.
Mr. McCormick?
A couple of my questions are in line with, with Dr. Walker's, but maybe more flesh out some of the details. You mentioned a couple of times on the preschool, it takes four portables, preschool initiative. Can you explain why that's separate, why that's different? Are those students factored into the, these numbers? Just like a little bit more information on that.
They are factored into the numbers, definitely. We made sure, to be sure of that whenever we were going through these in the first place. Paige, elaborate on why they're...
Yeah, the, Mr. McCormick, those portables have been there, and quite honestly, they were designed for CPI. All, all four of those have restrooms, and there's, it's a, it's a four-pack, for lack of a better word. There's a, a two together and two together, and each of them have a restroom. So they were designed specifically for that. We have that same model at Georgetown and Camelot as well. We do have, of course, restrooms and pre-K, but more special ed pre-K at Crestwood Elementary, not CPI. We do not have CPI classes all throughout the district. I would say maybe six or seven schools, Ms. Walk, Edwards, if I'm right. So we did not plan on moving them to, to Crestwood Elementary.
Okay. And then to flesh out Dr. Walker's other question, all three options have less than a hundred percent of capacity at BM Williams, yet we're still using portables in all three options. Is it a problem with the equation? It seems like if we're at a hundred percent, we should be able to be a hundred percent within the building. So I just, it doesn't make sense to me, so I'm sure it's not making sense to the community.
Well, that's kind of in line with what Paige was saying about the program needs at the building, that, you know, that wasn't, what was it initially, was a, what level, school level was that initially when it was built? I don't know, but it was, when it was built, it wasn't, essentially, it wasn't built for what is now a K through to primary school. There were different educational needs at the time, and as needs for programs were added, you know, the building wasn't necessarily outfitted. There are faculty members that don't have appropriate spaces that are using portables at that building. And so even regardless of enrollment numbers, there's just needs that the, the building itself can't house within the building as of now.
There, there's a significant more support at schools than there were when that building was built, even going down to just a guidance suite. Before, you'd have a guidance person, and they probably didn't even serve a whole day there. Now you have more than one guidance, and some, they teach classes. So, so guidance is entirely different. We have many more psychologists than we ever had before. We have more, more professionals help with mental health. And all those people need a space somewhere, even if it's, maybe they're serving a couple schools, as an example, but they need a home. So we have more of that. There's also more, really just special ed as well. We don't have all the special ed spaces that, that we need at those facilities. And, and a lot of the older buildings, you will find that we probably, if we have portables there, they may be a little bit, you're like, hmm, the nu, numbers don't a hundred percent add, add up because they are only a little bit over capacity, or maybe they're right at capacity and they have some portables. Everyone thinks that if you have a hundred, if you have, and I'll just use this as an example, if you have a nine-hundred student school, and you have eight-hundred students, you think, well, there's, if you say twenty-five kids per class, or even twenty kids per class, we should have four or five vacant classrooms. Rarely will you find that's the case. That's based on all the numbers lining up exactly following where they're supposed to be, and then that's assuming that we don't have any additional resource spaces that are there to help, help the kids. So in all likelihood, you, you, you may have a couple of classrooms empty, but I guarantee you, you probably don't have the four or five that most, most people who don't, aren't in the profession would, would think you'd have. So that helps.
Yeah, that does. And, and, and so when we're building new schools, like we built Chittam and we're going to build a new one in Deep Creek, are we building additional resource spaces within the school that is not part of, it's not factored into capacity then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that the issue is not so much the classroom, or not so much just, it, the issue is the number of rooms, not the number of classrooms necessarily, when we're looking at capacity.
It's, it's really just space overall. Those buildings do not have all the space they need to accommodate the support. And support is not capacity-driven. And so if you take a classroom and you have to have it, and you're putting three teachers in it, just as an example, therefore, that, that classroom can no longer be used as capacity. You know, at Crestwood Elementary, we will, we're building supports in, building the supported space they need, so therefore, it's already, it's not going to be included in capacity, but it's also not taking away a classroom, because it's designed appropriately for the needs of today.
So when we're looking at the Culpeper School, and we're building that, and I don't know what, what the projected capacity is, but it's not a situation where it's at ninety-five, but we immediately need portables because the auxiliary space or the additional spaces are already built into the building?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Thank you. Just a few questions. I don't want to beat the dead horse here, but just to be clear, option three eliminates all the portables at BM Williams outside of the preschool?
No. No, it, it would be more than likely more than half, but we don't believe...
For option three?
Yes, but we don't believe that it would be all of them.
Okay, but more than half? So we don't really know.
Yeah, it's a range that you...
Okay. So I look at portables as a huge safety concern. I'm sure a lot of people up here do. And so I would just ask, as we're looking at these options, I think, I'm not saying portables or use of portable should be the only thing that determines that. But, you know, we've had some speakers here tonight that have, have spoken about new development and things like that. And I think sometimes we as a, a school system, because we have to educate the kids that live in our district, we tend to, our answer, our solve is always portables. And it's just, in this day and age, it's very concerning to me because I find them to be a huge security risk for our children. So I would just, I, I know you guys look at that, but, but please keep that lens as you look at these options. To me, it's just super important. My second question was, you can, you mentioned a couple of times for Crestwood around future, the most growth for future development. Is that based off of purely land availability, or have you actually looked at potential future projects from developers that are in the pipeline? And that's what determined that?
There's at least one in the pipeline.
Okay.
A lot of it is there's, you know, a fair bit of man, land available, excuse me. I know there's at least one that is up for rezoning right now. I don't want to say more than that, Paige. Do you have anything else to add to that? Yeah, that's, I mean, that's getting into the land of speculation that...
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't believe I see any other question. Oh, you do?
Well, I didn't have a question. I just had a quick comment. I think it's clear tonight from your presentation and then your answers to the questions as well as Ms. Stutz, there's not really a simple solution for every problem. And I just really appreciate the effort that you put into this. I do hope that the public is always listening, because I do know that portables is a hot topic with, with, with families. However, there isn't just a simple fix-all solution. So I just appreciate the clarity tonight and, and the way that you've addressed it and the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the action agenda. The first item tonight is the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan. Back to you, Ms. Stutz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, once again. The superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan was initially presented in October. Since then, we have had two public hearings, including this evening and a couple of work sessions. We do not have anything formally planned for you this evening, but we certainly, Alex and I are here to answer any questions you have. If you don't have any questions, or, or once we finish answering your questions, we will be asking for final action this evening on the capital improvement plan. And keep in mind that once the board approves the plan, it becomes the school board's proposed capital improvement plan. It will be forwarded to the city and be included in their review. And of course, council has to take action by May fifteenth on, on the CIP. Do you all have any questions?
Seeing no additional questions on the capital improvement plan, I will entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Mr. Poole. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Scott. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Stutz. As a reminder, during the adoption of the agenda earlier this evening, item B on the action agenda was removed for further research and review. So with that, we will now move on to the superintendent's report. Over to you, Dr. Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're excited to invite the public to participate in shaping the future for our school district. As you know, twenty-twenty-five is upon us, and it's time for us to create a new strategic plan to guide us over the next five years. Our first session will take place tomorrow evening from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM right here at the school administration building. If you cannot attend in person, we're also offering two virtual sessions on December seventeenth and the eighteenth from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM. Visit our website to learn more and access the virtual meeting links. We hope you can join us as we develop our next strategic plan. Lots of groups have been involved in working through this. This is just one piece of a multifaceted approach to getting feedback from our community. As a reminder, the last day of school for our students and staff is December twentieth. I always say I don't need to remind anybody of that, but I, but I will. Schools will be closed from December twenty-third through January third for the winter holidays. Our doors, doors will open for a new year on January sixth. When we return in January, I'm looking forward to traveling to Richmond with many of you, as we will be meeting with members of our Chesapeake delegation. We will be meeting with our senators and delegates on January twenty-second. This is a great opportunity for the board to discuss our legislative priorities with our representatives, and I hope that many of you can make that trip. With that, I'm happy tonight to share the spotlight this evening. As we enter into December, our student, staff, and communities continue to do incredible things, and I'm excited to share some of them with you tonight. The first Lego League competition was held right before Thanksgiving in five of our schools. Butts Road Intermediate, Truitt Intermediate, Thurgood Marshall Elementary, Crestwood Intermediate, and Greenbrier Intermediate had outstanding showings at the event. The tournament aims to promote STEM, education, and teamwork among young participants, and judges each team based on robotic performance, research, design, cooperation, and inclusion. Congratulations to Greenbrier Intermediate for winning second place and advancing to the state finals at James Madison University this Saturday. We'd also like to congratulate Truitt Intermediate for winning the Core Values Award, and Thurgood Marshall for winning the Judges Award. Through another wonderful partnership with the JCA Foundation, select students were provided with a little holiday magic on the eighteenth Annual Kids Cruise Event held at Oscar Smith Middle School. The school was transformed into a winter wonderland, and I, I got that firsthand thanks to Mr. Poole, who went loose with Fast and Furious with the snow machine. But anyway, the school was transformed into the winter wonderland, where students received gifts, played games, made crafts, and took a holiday lights tour at the beach. Special thanks to our family and community engagement team and our teachers who supported the event. JCA's goal is to show children the benefits of giving back, and hopes they will do the same for others in the future. And of course, that's J. Archbell, his foundation, who, and he's been doing incredible work for our community. If sticking to a budget is something you struggle with, then maybe one of our high schoolers can help you. Four of our high schools were recently awarded top honors for the, for their performance on the Wise Financial Literacy Test. Grassfield High School earned the top award and is a platinum star school for the third year in a row for achieving over ninety percent pass rate. Great Bridge, Hickory, and Western Branch were all recognized as Blue Star Schools for achieving an eighty percent pass rate. In addition, twenty of our teachers from five of our high schools in the Chesapeake Virtual Academy were named Gold Star Teachers for achieving at least a ninety-three percent pass rate. Congratulations to these students and teachers. We celebrated some fantastic teachers at the twenty-twenty-five Teacher of the Year Ceremony. This year, we celebrated the forty-eight individual honorees who joined us at Indian River High School with their colleagues and families. I'd like to thank Principal Dunbar and the Indian River High School for being such gracious and accommodating hosts. The Grassfield Elementary Fifth Grade Chorus did a great job performing during the ceremony, and for all the people and groups that made the event a success. It was an incredible night celebrating our wicked talented teachers. Let's take a look back at the event.
They leave handprints on the hearts of our youngest learners, and this is our opportunity to show them the love that they most certainly deserve.
Middle school often represents a time of big changes in the lives of our students and their families.
These educators often have the distinction of being the last impression on our students before they become our dogs.
Please join me in congratulating the twenty-twenty-five Elementary Teacher of the Year from Butts Road Intermediate School, Julie Carrie King.
This year's Middle School Teacher of the Year, Beth Dear.
High School Teacher of the Year, Shannon Anderson.
Please join me in congratulating this year's Teacher of the Year, who truly defies gravity, Caitlin Gabriel.
We also announced our four district-level winners that evening. I hope you'll join me in congratulating our Elementary Teacher of the Year, Julie Carrie King from Butts Road Intermediate. Middle School Teacher of the Year, Beth Dear from Hickory Middle School. High School Teacher of the Year, Shannon Anderson from Grassfield High School. And of course, as you heard, our overall Chesapeake Teacher of the Year, Caitlin Gabriel from Oscar Smith Middle School. We're also proud of all these, we're so proud of all of these outstanding educators. I'd like to thank the Chesapeake Educational Foundation, who presented Mrs. Gabriel with a one thousand dollar gift card. Congratulations again to all of our teachers... Congratulations again to all of our Teachers of the Year. We are so proud you represent Chesapeake Public Schools. And we are looking forward to honoring these individuals at a future school board meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This completes my spotlight for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cotton. Last on our agenda this evening is board member items. Does any board member have an item to bring before the group? Ms. Dean?
Thank you. I just actually, we had, um, you know, we had a couple of speakers tonight that talked about some future development and upcoming council meetings. And I'm actually one of the lucky people. I consider myself very lucky that I get to live in rural Chesapeake. And that's a recent thing for me. I used to live right on Hanbury Road, right across from Great Bridge High School. Um, but I made a decision to move my kids out there because I wanted a different way of life for them. And I'm grateful for that and I'm saddened that there are other children that won't get to experience that because of all of the vast development that's going on. And so I just encourage, um, you know, the other members of this board, Dr. Cotton, I encourage you and, and your staff as well to, to pay attention to, to what's happening, not say that you don't. Um, but also speak up if you feel compelled to, because again, we have a duty to educate the children in Chesapeake. And I think we all feel very obligated to ensure that that education is high quality. And sometimes those decisions made put us in a very hard position in order to do it. Like Ms. Scott just said, there's no easy solution to overcrowding in schools that are overcapacity. No easy solution and no easy answer, but we still have to figure it out. So I just, I just ask all of my colleagues here to really think about it. And if you feel compelled to go and speak, please do. I unfortunately can't be there that day because my children have a Christmas program and I would never live it down if I wasn't there. But I do plan on emailing and reaching out to council members to, to voice my opinion. So thank you, ladies, for speaking tonight.
Seeing no other additional comments, I certainly wanna take a moment to add congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. You are all absolute rock stars among rock stars. We are certainly blessed to have teachers across our division at every level who are amazing and go to work every day with passion in their hearts and doing, um, a wonderful job. And we hope that you all have a wonderful holiday. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned.